My clock just turned six thirty. And I show that I see actually that we have a quorum of the city council, city of Hillsborough in the room. So I will call the meeting of the city council to order. First item up on our agenda this evening is our consent agenda. And under our consent agenda, we have five items. The first of those is vouchers with an amended total of two hundred and forty-six thousand, thirty-four dollars and ninety-four cents. Did everyone receive copies of the amended vouchers? Secondly, we have minutes from our December three, twenty twenty-four regular meeting and our December nine, twenty twenty-four special meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any corrections to the minutes? Third item is pay estimate number four for the Adams Street project.
I don't think it made it into the packet, but we've got it right here so you can kind of see what we're talking about. Maintain amount, dude, this bill is two hundred and seventy-seven.
Got it up there. This is the estimate to pay them for up through. The current gutter, but not any of the mainline paving from A to B. It does include the mainline paving from A to B. But the only thing it was paid for on this project was the curb north and driveways. So the mainline will all be on the next pay estimate.
Gotcha.
Hey, can everybody see that? Are there any questions regarding that pay estimate? Then we have item four, which is the estimate to repair turbo on the Peterbilt trash truck totaling fourteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars, eighteen cents. Did everyone receive copies of that estimate?
No, it's Mike Morales.
Yeah, this and that. The Peterbilt is the two thousand nineteen truck.
Right.
I know we have David Lockwood on the line if anybody had a particular question, I believe. All right, hearing none, the final item is the CDBG vouchers totaling two thousand, but they're actually amended.
Yeah, I got amended this afternoon.
To thirty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
The the statement from GSI Engineering is for remediation of asbestos. This is the daycare portion. The state actually put in fifty thousand dollars. And so this is the balance of that, thirty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So it ended up being pretty expensive remediation.
Yes. Yes, can sit where?
Okay. Any questions regarding this amended CDBG voucher total? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll motion it.
Councilman Wilkins moves. Councilman Jorgensen seconds. Is there any further discussion?
I do have a question. In the vouchers, when I was looking through it, it mentioned a body cam replacement for the police officers. I guess, could you just give me some clarification? Is this a, this like a, I guess, what's the frequency?
Not very frequent thing we do with that. They had an issue. Trying to remember all the specifics with that. They, this would be the first time I think they've replaced it. The watch guard system that they had before, I think, was out of, it wouldn't support it anymore. So they had to make some adjustments to to replace that.
Okay. Thank you.
I did have one question, too. It seemed like a larger than normal rec commission, twenty-three thousand. I'm just curious what that was.
That's a sweep.
That's appropriation.
Oh, that's appropriation, okay. So we collect their property taxes that come to us. And then we have to make that distribution to them, so we just do that via check. So that's what that is. So that's property tax for the second half, property tax and what we have left in the account to sweep over to, right?
That was the only the appropriation.
Only the appropriate.
Not these.
Okay.
And the appropriation for the libraries and theirs, so.
Okay.
Sweet. Right, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now going to move into our first opportunity for public comment. And I noticed we have some people from the public in the room. Is there anybody here that would like to address the council?
Matt, do you want me to cover this now since it was part of the agenda or you want me to wait till later?
No, let's go ahead.
Okay, real quick update, just want to give you an update on Adams Street. They poured the rest of, huh?
This is Darren Newfeld from EBH Engineering, by the way.
Sorry. Yes, Darren Newfeld, EBH Engineering. So Adams Street, they poured the final mainline pour today. So it has been completely poured out. The only thing that we have left to do is, of course, we're in the seven day waiting period. Later this week, though, we're going to give them permission to get on it with their seal trucks. They're going to wide cut and seal hopefully Thursday, worst case, next Monday morning. So by Monday afternoon, we are going to open it wide open to traffic next week. And then if they do not have the mailboxes done, which is, they got mailboxes and cleanup to do. If they don't have the mailboxes done, when they come back to do those after the holidays, we'll just close down the one block they're working in while they're working in it. And then move that kind of along with us. And we'll still let local traffic in. We'll just try to help them out a little bit by not letting everybody through there while they're, you know, putting mailboxes up, so. But the only other thing, the waterline portion, ditch diggers said this morning they are planning on mobilizing January sixth. I think that's that Monday. And as soon as they hit the ground, we've got three water meters down in the block between A to B that we are in the way of the driveways. So we we left out us either a wedge piece or part of the driveway on those three. People can still get in their driveways and use them, just the whole thing isn't there yet. And so we'll have ditch diggers move those first. And then those parks said they'd come back in in that next day or two and get those last little pieces of concrete poured. But as of this afternoon, it is now one hundred percent poured out.
Any questions for Darren? Okay. I think that will conclude our first opportunity for public comment. And now we will move into a twenty twenty-four budget amendment hearing. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to be heard or do we need to have you go over it first?
Either way, you can, you can, you're opening the hearing and have that opportunity for public feedback. If you want me to do it now, I can do that or.
Why don't you go ahead and and review it? And then if there's anybody has comments or questions, we can address those after you've shown us what the what the amendments are.
So really, we're amending four four funds in this amendment. We're actually kind of creating three that were suggestions from the auditor. The electric department is the only one that we're amending that is an existing fund. We made some changes there. Most of that's related to the capital improvement projects there. And we changed some of the transfer lines and did a little bit of rearranging for some things to accommodate what was actually happening during the year. And so that that budget total went up to three million, five hundred and fifty-seven, seven thirty-six. We added CPG projects, so this includes all the CPG projects that we've been doing, the daycare, especially is the big one. But then also we had a little bit in there for the one twenty-six North Main project, which also has CPG funds. So we had to record those and that's something new. So it's a total totally new expenditure amount of three point three million. And then we added the bowling alley. Obviously, we didn't have that when we did the original budget, so we've put together a budget for that. The expenditure side on that is twenty-six thousand, revenue thirty-two, five. So actually end up with, we're probably have a much larger cash balance than that at the end of the year. But this is kind of what we put in there for the budget budget purposes. And then we also budgeted out, excuse me, our health insurance reserves. This is the the amount that we set aside to fund our claims. And so that was, we've always run that as a non-budgeted item, but they've suggested that we move that into a budgeted item. So that's what that is. And it's one hundred and twenty thousand expenditures. We usually end up with about a hundred and hundred and fifteen, between a hundred and a hundred and fifteen in the reserve fund at the end of the year. I think we're actually doing better than that right now. So those are the four funds that we've made amendments to. This has been published in the newspaper. We've advertised it appropriately to state law. And so this budget hearing is is the next piece of it. And then it'll be up for consideration.
Okay. Are there anybody here from the public that has a question or a comment regarding our amended budget? Yes.
Have a question about which newspapers you're publishing it in.
Yeah, the the official paper for City Hillsborough is the Marion County Record. That's the one that meets the definition for the legal state publication requirement.
So it's definitely in the record then?
Perfect.
I thought that's where I saw it, but I wanted to make sure.
Yep. I'm not sure what the date was when we published that. It was.
Thirty days.
Yeah, it was it was before, it was in the end of November, I think, sometime, so.
Yes, correct.
Any other questions or comments? Anything from the council? All right. Then we will, I guess we will close the hearing. So we will now close the budget amendment hearing and then we will take action. So I would accept a motion to adopt the amended budget as submitted.
I'll motion it.
Okay. Would you like to second?
Sure, second.
Councilman Wilkins moves and Councilman By seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to poll the council on this. Councilman By.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty. Councilman Wilkins. Councilman Jorgensen. The budget is amended as of this vote. Now we're going to move into business items. First item we have is not ordinance fifteen oh one, it's actually fourteen oh one, correct?
That's correct, sir.
All right, so ordinance fourteen oh one, setting water, trash and recycling rates for twenty twenty-five. Mr. Stiles?
Thank you, sir. So yeah, this this sets the rates that we've been talking about for the last three meetings. It does include the the fee table that you guys passed a couple of meetings ago because we had included the recycling fee in there. And so this this amend, we had to put it back in there. And like we said when we passed that, anytime you make an amendment, you have to print the whole thing. And so that's what you get on that, that sells. You got that whole thing. If you scroll down past that, then you get to the rate section there, what it talks about, the water rates. And we, you know, these are reflective of the tiers that we put together. And we talked about the last couple of meetings. So you got water there and then you got the trash service there. And then, you know, you've got a whole series of items with that because it's based on commercial the number of times and those things. So this is exactly what we had talked about at the previous meeting. And so this is, this is the formal ordinance to make that change. If if this is approved, it won't, it'll go into effect once it's published, but we won't actually see it on a bill until February. And that's just how it falls in the billing cycle.
Questions? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to adopt ordinance fourteen oh one, setting water, trash and recycling rates for twenty twenty-five. Councilman Jorgensen moves, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Wilkins seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll poll the council. Councilman Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilman Wilkins?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty? Councilman By?
Yes.
Ordinance fourteen oh one is hereby adopted and the mayor will sign. Next item under business is consideration of proposed process for renaming the bowling alley. This is something a little more light.
A little lighthearted, yeah.
Last action. Mr. Stiles?
Thank you, sir. So, yeah, we, after we discussed it last time after getting that grant, there's an opportunity to change the name. That's something we wanted to do. And we were directed to bring you back a process outline, like, how does that look? What's that look like? So I put Callie on it since she's the one responsible for making that grant. We're going to make her do this, too. So what you have there is kind of an outline of what that looks like. We would put it out and, you know, she's got a whole outline of kind of what what the process would be. We would have an online submission and then have paper submission options. And we we put together, we we kind of put out a five member panel that would review it, myself, mayor, David Edgar, who's the director of Parks and Recreation, and then the gauges who work at the bowling alley. We would kind of take a look at that and start getting those submissions in in December and and think about, or, excuse me, we would start taking them in January and then make a decision. And based on Callie's timeline, somewhere around February eighteenth, we would make a final call. It would ultimately be up to this group to make that decision. I think the goal of the review committee would be to get it down to one or two solid recommendations and kind of go from there. A couple of things to think about in here, decision points with this. So the first thing was the prize. We sort of set the prize first, the first swing at it, we actually were like lifetime free bowling. As long as we on the, well, might be a little aggressive. So we backed that up, like, well, we can do a cash prize. That wouldn't be, that's that's easy, obviously. But we've kind of landed on, I I think we would recommend one year of free bowling. For them and their family or however, however you want to structure that. David and I were talking this morning about setting up a potential membership option for the bowling alley, kind of like what we do with the golf and the swimming pool. Where somebody could buy a membership and then come in and bowl whenever we're open. It's kind of a different idea thinking about it and we're trying to kicking that around. I'm not sure how we're doing or what the pricing would be. But if you were to do that, this would be an easy way to to give somebody a prize, you'd like, you get a membership to the bowling alley. So that's something there to think about, some some interesting benefits with doing that. I think lifetime might be a little over the top, but one year is probably good. Second decision is we got an opportunity for feedback here because on the on the on the form that she's had, there's a space in there, like, how many times do you come to the bowling alley? That kind of thing. But if you wanted to add, you know, the question that always comes up is beer sales. It's the one thing that comes up all the time. If you wanted to add that to this, you would have an opportunity to do that because you're soliciting feedback. I don't know if it's appropriate to put it on there or not. It's up to you. I could go either way, don't really care. But if that's something you want to capture some feedback, we're going to obviously have submissions coming in, so be an opportunity for that. As far as the financial impact, this pretty nominal, whatever that prize is, we're basically just foregoing collecting that revenue, whatever it ends up being. So it's not going to be a great big impact. You might actually make some money if those people bring in extra people or, you know, they want to come in and buy concessions, whatever. So there may be something there. Changing the sign, all the alley, that, all that is included in that grant. So that that price is is covered, so. Just needs a little bit of direction now, if this is a good process for you, you feel like this is good. You know, there's changes we need to alter that in any way. Let's let's get them out there and get it going. I think having it, that timeline makes some sense. As far as being able to physically change the sign, it's probably going to be one of the last things we do as this project because it's going to have to be weather that's suitable for that. So there's a little bit of time in there, so we don't necessarily have to hustle through it, but we kind of thought into February is pretty good. So, yeah, so we're just looking for feedback and kind of which direction you want us to take it.
One thing that I thought of is in the event of, let's say, two or multiple different people come up with the same name. How would we go about that situation? Because I was thinking, I know for as far as the online submission, I don't know if that would be time or date stamped. But we could also add a, you know, like a date of when they're submitting on the paper form. So that way we can just go by, okay, whoever submitted it first, technically, you know, they put the idea out there first. So I think that would be a.
Think that makes sense. Think about that, people submitting the same one.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how likely it is, but it is possible, though. I'm going to stop the ballot with that.
You've already shot it.
Get fifty of the same one.
Yeah, then you know it's a winner, right? No, that's makes sense. We can, the, all the entries online are timed, so we can tell for sure on that, but we can add something on the other. That's not a problem.
I don't know if we necessarily need a feedback portion, at least for this, especially against the beer sales. Because I don't want to take away from, I could see that being a problem.
Yeah. I I totally understand that, too. If there's other information that you could just, I think we can do that, too. I mean, we put on there, I think, number of times or frequency you come to the bowling alley. We were just kind of curious. And part of it's for the grant, too, they they require some kind of, some kind of metrics. And so we're like, okay, well, that's one we can collect fairly easily.
Kelly did a really good job on putting the this process together and and the whole plan, all that. It's really, really good, so kudos to her. Makes it very easy for us to follow and and comment on, so.
Any other comments? I would only add that, you know, the the conversation about beer and and that kind of thing, that was, that was not factored into our decision to acquire the bowling alley. So it's not to say that that may not come up in the future, but let's get through, I think.
Let's do this.
Let's get through this first. I agree with Blake. Did I just say that?
Wow. It's a first, I'm going to write that.
It's Christmas.
It's like a, it's like a party foul, you know, sorry.
Man, that could come from.
Yeah.
You call a sick man?
He's running a fever.
That's it. But, but yeah, I think this, you know, Kelly's got, I I I agree with Ronald that we should add the add the date and I think we should move forward.
I think we ought to do, is the one year bowling, like the appropriate prize? I think it's kind of fun and novel.
I would, I would suggest for, for, if it's a single person, that it should be at least another, another, they should be able to have another person.
Bring another.
Bring another one, but if it's, but if somebody is, would be limited to their immediate family, if you're talking about. Yeah, immediate. So would you like a motion and?
Yeah, sure.
Would somebody care to to make the motion to move forward on the basis, Councilman By?
Second.
Councilman Jorgensen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this motion carries.
Like Bowlarama.
That's it.
Oh, wait, we didn't put that in.
You got like images already.
Yeah. Watch your face on the sign.
Looks pretty.
I don't.
I want people to come there, I don't want them to run away from.
True that. True that. Next up is consideration of funding for a cancer insurance policy for the Hillsborough Fire and Rescue.
Fireman's relief.
Fireman's relief.
Surgeon said.
Association.
Association, I brought organization in here, sorry.
All right. And Mr. Stiles, I know we have Captain Hine here. Did you want him to address it or are you prepared to do that?
I, that one's fine, I don't know, Matt, okay. So I, just for background, the fire department has a fire, an FRA, a fire relief organization. It's kind of, it's designated, it's created in the state statute. There's a a fee that insurance you collect on insurance policy that actually pays for some of the activities of volunteer firefighters associations. So there's some money that comes in for that and they do an annuity. So if you work for twenty years within an apartment, you're eligible for an annuity. They also use some of this revenue to purchase accidental death and dismemberment policies, other type of policies to protect firemen. It's a really good thing and they also have dues and they do fundraisers as well. So it's it's kind of a combination effort. So they have a life insurance policy, which you kind of see in that quote. It's a little bit, there's a lot going on in that quote, but there's one in there for twenty-five thousand for all active members. So they've got that piece in place. And one of the things we've been talking about with the fire station project is this cancer issue. So firefighters, especially volunteer firefighters, are exposed to a lot of chemicals, a lot of different things within fires that raises the risk for cancer. So nationally, it's nine percent higher and deaths from cancer is fifteen percent higher compared to just a non-fire fire. So it's it's a serious issue and I know they've had a lot of people in in departments, it's been a really big issue, suffering from cancer. And we talked about it when we were in Hudge, they had that, a bunch of issues with that, too.
It's pretty high opening.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's a pretty big deal. And so the firefighter, the FRA came and asked about, you know, would it be, would it be possible for the city to to help with a cancer policy? There's cancer policies that you can buy. And as you can see from that quote, that quote there, there's lots of different levels of it. You know, there's kind of a, one that does critical illness, too. So that's going to include not only cancer, but heart attacks and strokes, which are also firefighters are more predisposed to and just from the conditions that they work in. So various payout amounts in those and the diagnosis codes and all that stuff. I mean, it's insurance, so of course it's got to be a little bit complicated, but. And when they do this, like life insurance, it's age banded. So when you see kind of the population that we have, you can, you see where the age breakout is in our fire department. So someone who's older is obviously more expensive than someone who's younger. So what we have there is a proposal. Rather than saying, let's just go with this one, I said, all right, well, you know, the firefighter, the FRA may decide that they want to do a different policy or something like that, but we can do a cancer policy. You know, we can, we could make a donation or or make a payment in there for twenty-eight hundred dollars. And if they decided they wanted to do a different level or if they wanted to do the critical illness piece, too, you know, that'd be something that we would pay the twenty-eight hundred for. And then they could, they could find the money to, through the FRA to pay the difference and and provide that coverage. So that was kind of my proposal with that. I don't know if Captain, you got anything to add to that?
That was an excellent description. And thank you for the additional research.
We didn't do a little, little extra on that. So, yeah, so that that would be the recommendation here with what I'm proposing would be to say, okay, we're going to take twenty-eight hundred dollars out of the firefighting budget and and push that into the the FRA cancer policy. That's the middle, middle policy amount, covers everybody. Again, if they want to change that up or down or change the coverage, that would be up to them, but we would do up to twenty-eight hundred. So that would be what I would propose. And, you know, I'd stand for any questions you might have about any of that.
It's just an annual amount, it's not, okay?
Yeah, it would change and, you know, every year it's going to be a little bit different as you age through your bands or people come and go. Department gets younger, it gets cheaper.
Believe this was a two year.
Is it two year, oh, two year guarantee on the policy premium? Okay.
So after, I mean, it'll, it's a renewing policy. So every time, like you said, as we all get a little bit older, the amount will change. Yeah, but then as the older ones retire off and newer, younger ones, hopefully younger ones come in, that will, that will change that, so.
Yeah, you know, a few folks that are kind of in, they're at the age, they could retire. I don't know what, you know, years of service are for those guys, but they're, you know, getting a little older, so.
We have several, we're twenty plus years.
Yeah.
And with you mentioning taking it from the firefighter's budget, I mean, that's not going to in any way, I guess, impact. Because you said twenty-eight hundred, I mean, that's not going to, I guess, put them in a situation where they couldn't get any materials or something like that.
The other option is we do have council, council-directed funds, so we have money we set aside for different projects. You know, we've got, for example, one that always comes to mind, we we've got the projects we set aside for the high school, haven't really been doing those. And so I don't know, but there's like twenty-five thousand set aside for that. So if you wanted to direct it out of that, you could do that. I just automatically think firefighter, firefighter, fire, fire department, but, yeah, you could do it out of any of those. So that you're definitely not impacting that, there's there's definitely money available that you could do that with. But if that is something you want to do, we'd want to include that in any motion so that we make sure that we're directing it the appropriate way. And this would be for twenty twenty-five, in the twenty twenty-five budget, not, we're not wanting to encumber it for this year because it will, it'll start next year.
Captain Hine, is is this amount something that that works for you and and the firefighters?
Yeah, me and Matt sat down the other day and had a conversation about it and we kind of both agreed that that was a, that was a very generous amount. And yes, that would definitely do what we want to do. And like you said, we're having a meeting tomorrow night, so it will get discussed then as well, based on the outcome of this meeting. We kind of decide what we're going to go for sure with it a hundred percent, but, yeah, it's very welcome.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, be looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
What is your motion?
Do we want to take it out of firefighter?
That's up to you. Need to include it comes from the twenty-five budget year and where you want to take it.
Well, you make a good point on not getting in the way of any other funds that they might need in there, so. Getting in the way of any other funds that they might need in there, so.
Maybe we should take it out of the council.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion to go out of the council funds.
For twenty twenty five.
Twenty five, not out of the fire budget.
Hey, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Yes, I will second that.
We have a motion by Councilman By and a second by Councilman Wilkins. To take twenty eight hundred dollars out of the council budget discretionary funds. And use to purchase the cancer insurance policy, or at least give it, give it to the.
Yeah, for the F R A.
F R A for that purpose. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have your feedback, Captain.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay, next item is consideration of a grant agreement with K State one oh five entrepreneurial blueprint. Program, Mr. Styles.
Yeah, this is a, an error on my part. We actually, we covered this on our last meeting. You guys accepted the grant. I didn't specifically ask you to approve the grant agreement, which is on me. And so that, that's what this is for today. I mean, you actually had a copy of it earlier. But when we went back and listened to it and looked at the minutes, we're like, yeah, no, we need to have it and just approved specifically. So that's what this is. It's that grant agreement. They're actually talking about, I'm going to send this to him tonight if you guys approve it. They're going to issue the first payment actually this week, it sounded like. So, yeah, it'd be pretty quick on that. Real short grant, so we got to be having everything done by July.
So we can take it off the download?
That's right. You bet.
We can talk about it. All right, wonderful. Any questions? Hearing none, I would consider a motion to. Accept the grant agreement with K State one oh five entrepreneurial blueprint program. Councilman McCarty moves.
Second.
Councilman Jorgensen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Final item in our business section is consideration of renewal of cereal malt beverage licenses for. Casey's and Casey's. We have Casey's in there twice. But just one, one license for them.
One license.
All right, Co-op slash Ampride Dollar General, Pizza Hut, Pueblo Viejo. And something called the City Golf Course. All right, yeah. Hey, Mr. Styles.
Yeah, so typically these would actually end up in the consent agenda, but we didn't have all the background stuff done at the time. Pulled them out and said, all right, let's put them, let's tackle them this way. You can do them all at once. You can break them up if you want to. It's kind of up to you. Just so you're reminded of how cereal malt beverage works, they changed the law on that. So six percent alcohol. So that's, that's now regular strength beer. It used to be three two, but so now it's it's six percent. And we have six active licenses. As you can see, Casey's, Ampride, Dollar General. They also package beer and then Pizza Hut, Pueblo Viejo and the City Golf Course. So by drink, so. We hadn't had all the information back. I think we've got everything back except for the Dollar General background.
Oh, was that not what you sent out earlier?
No.
Oh, that was the, okay.
So we're waiting on that background check. They've switched people two different times, I think, in this past year. And so it's one of those deals where we're kind of waiting on that. It's corporate thing. We landed in a weird spot in the month because it's, you know, it's it's fairly early for the second meeting of the month. So we're trying to tie all this business up. And normally we'd have to closer to the end of the month. And I think that doesn't affect it this a little bit. So. What we're looking for, oh, and a city golf course, you know, in case there's a question about what we did, we sold nine hundred and sixty five beers this coming season. It's around a hundred, a hundred, a thousand dollar net profit based on the amount we sold. It was less than I thought it was going to be, honestly. But yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't real sure. I wasn't following it super close. So what we're recommending is renewal for all of them, pending the background check for Dollar General to be completed and and passed. But otherwise, everything else looked pretty good.
So does the liquor store have a different license that they get?
They operate under. A B C.
Okay.
So they don't have, yeah, liquor stores are different.
I was just curious.
They can sell cereal malt beverage, but they can also sell.
I do also have a question, Matt. On the, on the section eight, the licensed premise. I I just, I just would like some clarification for my own knowledge. For the license fee received, it says twenty five to fifty for off premise license. And twenty five to twenty for on premise, for on premise license. Could you, I guess, would off premise just be, I guess, what? What would that entail?
So that would be, that were like catering, is that how that works, Daniel? I'm not the.
Yes, and then like special events.
Okay.
Um, like do. Catering, like weddings that they go off, they have those. And then. You guys, for your art festival, single day, the single day special events.
Or you have that with the Scheffler House, when the golfers sold the Scheffler House.
A mobile.
County Fair.
Yeah, those, those kind of things. And this is the. This is the city, I mean, the state form, so it might not be applicable to each of these.
Okay.
So our, yeah, our city license is fifty bucks. And so that's why it has the range. I think the minimum, the minimum must be twenty five. And then you can go all the way up to fifty or two hundred and something on premise.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the cereal malt beverage renewals. With the proviso that Dollar General passes their background check.
Make that motion.
Councilman By moves. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilman Wilkins seconds.
A quick comment to make sure that we would only, that we were approving. I don't want to not approve the others because of the Dollar General.
No, Dollar General is, would be the only one impacted, right?
That's your intention.
Intent of your motion. We're not suggesting that if Dollar General fails their background check, nobody gets a license.
That's how it sounded.
That's kind of. Be easier to do two, like, would it be easier to have a motion for all of them and then a motion just for Dollar? I I would that clear it up?
Daniel, would that help?
It would. We currently have a motion and a second.
Okay. So would you care to amend your motion to approval for everyone but Dollar General?
Until they get their background check. Yep, nope, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
So your motion will exclude Dollar General?
The Dollar General, yes.
And I will still second that.
It stands?
Yes.
Okay, are we clear on our motion and second? Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now let's take up the the approval for Dollar General. Would somebody care to make that motion conditional on their passing their background checks?
I will motion to approve them if their background check passes.
All right.
Second that.
And we have a motion in a second, just reverse to the previous motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now have some discussion items. And we're going to first start with the fire station project, Mr. Styles.
Okay, so just following up on the community meeting we had, we had fourteen people from the community attendance, according to our records. There may be a couple more that wandered in, but I don't know if we caught them all, but fourteen total. You know, we had some specific questions about living quarters. I heard about a couple on how it's going to get paid for, that kind of question. Didn't hear a lot of, didn't get a lot of negative feedback. I think everybody was pretty positive on it, so. You know, I don't know if what you all have encountered individually in the community, but. That's always, that's always where it kind of hits the road is that you got, you guys talk to people. I I talked to a lot of people too in the community, but I haven't really heard a lot of negatives though. On the technical side of this, I spoke with Sandra Ring. She'd be our USDA loan representative on Thursday. She walked through the, I walked her through the project and the requirements and outline and felt like this would be a pretty good project candidate for her program. So if we were going to move forward with that, they've got a pre-application process that we would need to get going on. And Greg included that in his. Outline his timeline. So that, that's part of that. And then we would need to start collecting some documentation because of, of course, they've got a lot there that you have to do. And there would have to be some procurement. So we'd have to do requests for qualifications for architect. And then, uh, once we get that selected and designed, then we move it on into. Contractors, so RFPs for contractors would be the next piece of that. Still thinking that you could get that in, in, in that timeline in the summer of twenty five. Construction, they're estimating ten, ten, eleven months. So that puts you out sometime in the middle of twenty six to be finished, if that was where you wanted to go. As far as like the financial impact, you know, we've talked about kind of a combo of of funding sources to do this. It's about three hundred thousand a year for Greg's estimate. So we would be looking at utilizing that local option sales tax, which paid for the pool. It's dedicated, it's got some things it's paying for on debt service now that we, that, that's what it's set, set up for. There's no. There's no sunset on that tax. It was designed to pay for the pool and then also to pick up, it's for. Debt service management. So that's a pretty big, that's a pretty big thing to drive.
Right.
Yeah, pretty big. So that can stay in place. Of course, there's always probably going to be a property tax portion of that, depending on how we mix those revenues together. And then we've also talked, I I'd thrown out there the idea of maybe doing an electric rate change to capture some revenue on that. So for reference, about. One cent kilowatt hour. Right now, we're at thirteen point nine five kilo cents per kilowatt hour. So one cent on that generates about two hundred and twenty thousand a year. So, yeah.
Question? So it says from non-tax paying entities. What, can you explain that, what that means?
So, yeah, we have a lot of property tax exempt entities, so they're not capturing.
Like for instance.
Taylor College.
The foundation.
Foundation, one of the seven churches in town, you know, the seven churches, the daycare.
So this would suggest raising the rate for them with, is their rate still pretty much commensurate with. A lot of the other rates? How does, how does that work?
Yeah, well, what, not necessarily raising it just for them. We would, you know, you'd want to look at raising it across the board. Probably unless you wanted to split your rates between residential and commercial, which are not really done right now. All those folks fall under the commercial side, so you could do that theoretically. The revenue would be different, but. Yeah, so there'd be an option there. And those are, those are things we haven't really worked out the specifics on. I'm just kind of giving you a ballpark of where that is. But there are a lot of, we do have a lot of non, non tax, non property tax paying people in town. And that'd be one way you could capture some revenue from them. Length of the USDA loan, forty years, debt service expires over our time. A lot of ours will be expired. Well before that forty year time. So you may be able to adjust your revenue mix as those other debt service pieces come off. There's no payment or penalty for prepayment on USDA loan. A lot of times USDA loans get restructured and wrapped up someplace else. So if the interest rate. Twenty years from now drops down to below the three and a half percent, which is what the USDA is, or close to three and a half to four. If it gets below that, you can refinance it, pay it out with that. We've done that before, actually, so that's not, not uncommon. Yeah, so that's, that's kind of the the basics, the broad strokes. If you're going to go the USDA route, again, we'll have to do the request for qualifications. We've been working with Sheldon Architects, but we've worked with another architect too. That would open that up. And so they would have to compete for that. Both of the people, and we've also talked to a builder or two. And everybody has been well aware of that from the beginning. So that shouldn't be a surprise to anybody. So if you're comfortable with that, I don't know if you feel like you've got enough community feedback yet. If, if you want to do more, fine, that's great. If you, if you're like, but Matt, let's go do this, then I'll get going on the USDA pre-application and we'll kind of continue down that timeline. So. Just looking for some feedback, want to hear what you heard, how you feel about it.
Well, I mean, I think a need for the new fire station has definitely been demonstrated. I mean, just keeping everything localized and reducing the potential delay in when they can get out and. Actually fight the fire. And, you know, we don't, we don't want to be the reason why someone loses their life because they have to go between two different buildings. And, I mean, just going to keep beating this dead horse as well. The mayor has mentioned. I think, what was it, twenty somebody years ago, the previous council, not to. Insult their judgment at all, not doing that. But, you know, they were kind of wary of the, what, three hundred thousand for the fire station? And now we're up to seven million potentially. So I mean, it's more than likely not going to get any cheaper. So we just keep dragging our feet on this and we could run the issue of when we need to actually build a fire station. And the price is just going to skyrocket. So, I mean, I, I think. I mean, I'm fine with moving, moving on with going forward with the fire station.
I think that. May I speak?
Absolutely, sure, absolutely.
I think most of my, the feedback to me has been on on cost as well, with probably a lot of us, as people raise the issue. So. But I think that we've also talked about various ways that it won't impact citizens quite as much. So. I would be in favor of moving forward as well because of, you know, because of these, the various options for paying for it, I think are pretty strong. So that's good.
I think it's on. I really do. I think so.
I've been, I don't remember ever bringing up the fire section for a vote, so it had to be more than twenty years ago.
But I think, I, go ahead.
I've only heard a couple of. I I told Matt about it. I heard a couple of people give me some feedback. They weren't against the fire section. They were unhappy about some other things. So I told Matt about it, so. I don't want to bring it up in council because it involves people that aren't around to defend ourselves. But I'm all in favor of the course.
Well, I do, I do recall a situation where. We had a, some firefighters injured fighting a fire in Peabody. Where they were up on an awning and it collapsed because at that time we did not have a ladder truck. And as a result of that, the council did make the decision to go ahead and and invest the money in a ladder truck, which. I think everybody got a chance to see our nice ladder truck that we have. And. I just feel like we've been very lucky up to this point. And I don't want to make, to defer this decision and then make it in the future. And I'm just going to say it this way, over somebody. And you can slice and dice that word any way you want. So.
I think we put it off long enough, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, it's been twenty years, been trying to get a fire section.
Okay. Would somebody care to make a motion that instructs Mr. Styles to to begin the process with USDA?
I'll make that motion.
We could go with.
Marty can have a mo, I'll take the second.
All right. So Councilman McCarty moves and Councilman By seconds. That we direct Mr. Styles to begin the process with USDA to secure a loan. And assemble the needed procurement and environmental documents. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are moving forward with that fire station. Next up, we have twenty twenty five statement of municipal policy, Mr. Styles.
Yeah, this is something we started doing last year. Statement of municipal policy basically just says, hey, look, these are the priorities that we have. From our legislators, moving forward for legislative session. The League of Cancer Municipalities does a big one. And as members of that, we kind of sign on. And it's multiple pages. But what we found is it's kind of helpful to narrow that down to things that are really important to us, so that we can put it on a one pager and hand that to. All of our officials or anybody else who we run into in the, in the halls of Congress and, or Congress. Could be Congress too, though, because we've taken it. I mean, we, we do, do, we deal with the federal side too sometimes, so. It is important to have that kind of thing. And it really gives us a distilled version of kind of what's important to us. So. I I pulled together some things that I know are going to be coming up. I think Lou has mentioned it a couple of different times that this, this last legislative session. Had to do more advocating for ourselves than we've had in a long time. So. So, um, I, I think this next session is going to be just as interesting. So, um, put together a list of things based on what we've been hearing and what's going to happen. Um, first thing I always put in there is cooperation and collaboration. We want to set ourselves as being able to work with this, the state. I think a lot of times there's a perception that we're against each other and that's not really the case. We, we, we all have the same constituency. We're all trying to improve quality of life for people. Uh, we don't want to be adversarial, so let's find some solutions where we can work together. Um, preservation of home rule, of course, that's a big thing for any city in the can, uh, in the state. Um, in sixty-one, there, they were, they have a constitutional amendment that voters pass that allow for home rule. And so the belief is that the people closest, uh, the government closest to the people governs best. Um, and so we have a lot of, of leeway as far as what we can do. Um, a lot of times the state tries to preempt us uh and make rules or unfunded mandates. And it's kind of ironic because they hate it when the federal government does that, but they're sure not afraid to do it to cities and counties. So, um, you know, we want to make sure that we preserve that home rule authority. Um, and that, that comes into a lot of different issues, but preemption is kind of one of those things you see a lot. Um, so we're going to try to, I, I would recommend putting that in there. It's more of a broader statement, kind of like the collaboration and cooperation, but it's still pretty important. Um, property tax reform, there's been a lot of push on property tax reform. Uh, a lot of times the state will look at, you know, tho- those dastardly cities and counties that are not doing their part to reduce your property tax when they don't really take any action to reduce their share of the property tax. So, um, there, there's always, there's always a efforts of foot to monkey with that or restrict that. And, you know, I've, I've sat in city council meetings for seventeen years doing this job. And I can tell you, I've never once had a city council member tell me, let's raid the mill levy just to do it. I mean, that has never been a thing. I've never heard that. Um, and so I think that by and large, local governments are pretty responsible. Um, they may make some mistakes every once in a while, but I don't think they ever, the intention is to, to monkey around and, and raise taxes just to do it. So that would be something to look at there. Um, preservation of three mile planning jurisdictions. This is, this is one that's more theoretical for us because we don't technically have it. We tried to pass it, but the county denied it multiple years ago. And so we've run into a few issues with this, but um extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction says, it, it's been kind of chipped away over the years. But it used to basically mean that you could control the zoning outside of your city up to three miles. Uh, there's lots of little caveats to that. The design and the purpose of that is so that you could control future development. The idea is that the city will expand at some point. Um, and we don't want, you know, the, the chicken processing plant to be right next to the great school. Um, and so that's kind of how that works. And so there's this, this idea that we need to preserve that. I know there's going to be efforts this year to try to, to reduce that. There's a lot of people, mostly from the northeast portion of the state, that don't like this. Um, again, a lot of times they try to legislate for everybody for a really specific issue that's happening somewhere else. Um, another one from last year that's coming back up, reasonable certification requirements for our water and sewer operators. Uh, this one's a little bit more technical, so they've been, had these rules proposed for a couple of years to change the certification process, making it very difficult for small systems. Uh, we don't want that. We want it to be easier, you know? We think that the certifications are a good thing. You need to have qualified people, but don't make it so onerous that it's difficult to find somebody. Um, and then there's also some things with how the testing gets done that we have issue with. I think those will get worked out, but uh we definitely want to make sure that those are reasonable. Uh, staying in the water lane, investment water quality, I think we've talked about this multiple times too, where there's really no one who wants to take responsibility for wall, water quality. They'll sell you water all day, uh, but no one really wants to step up and say, all right, we're in charge of Marion Reservoir Water Quality. We know it sucks and we need to do something about it. Um, so that's all spread out and, you know, we would like some clarifying on that role of responsibility for that. That would make my life easier, that would make Morgan's life easier, that would make a lot of things better. Uh, the state did make a huge investment in water, uh, with the water plan, but this is still an issue that's out there. Uh, an electrical issue that we need to be thinking about is net metering. Last session, there were some attempts to throw municipals in with investor on utilities on net metering. So net metering, basically, uh, we don't have it, we have parallel generation, uh, which, not to, like, it's really. So net metering means that if you're, uh, have a solar panel, you generate, you know, ten kilowatt hours. Net metering requires the utility that's providing you electricity to take that ten and buy it at the full retail rate. So it's an offset, one for one. Uh, when we have it, we have parallel generation. So somebody generates ten megawatts, we pay them a hundred and fifty percent of the wholesale rate uh for that power. Um, the thought is that we've got other things that we have to support in order to continue to give them power. So it's not really a one for one offset for their investment. Some people don't like that. That's, that's what the state law says as far as um municipality and, and other co-ops. Um, and so there's been a push to kind of push people into, uh, throw us in with that net metering thing that Evergy's gotten into. We don't really like that. Um, I don't know that it's going to end up being a huge thing at the end of the day. It ends up being more of a philosophical argument, but um, the bottom line is we didn't really ask people to put in giant solar panels. Um, we, we have a business model that doesn't, doesn't work on that. So, um, keeping the net metering out and, and keeping um parallel generation makes a lot of sense for local utilities, so. Uh, consumer protection for solar customers, this is another one too. There's no consumer protection for solar customers. We've had people, I wouldn't say suckered, but kind of suckered into buying um solar panels in this community um with not great terms. Um, they're, they're paying way too much and they're, they're getting promised that the uh solar panels and the generation that they're going to make is going to pay for their, not only pay for the investments, going to wipe out their electric bill. Uh, that has never been the case. None of them do that. Um, you can't build a solar system big enough to do that in the city for, for a regular residential person. Um, the only one that's maybe the exception is Daryl Alstutz, his isn't, his is like a giant solar thing. So, um, and he's on our net metering side, so. There are a lot of predatory practices. We've run into this a lot. Um, there's a real simple fix for this. They could turn it into like they do for roofers. Um, the uh, gee, the AG's office has to certify roofers. Uh, they could do the same for solar customers. There, there's a, a belief that the, the legislation already exists to allow this. They're resistant to that, but we feel like it's something that needs to happen because it's, it's not right that our solar customers get sold a bill of goods. Uh, we try to warn them, we try to talk to them, but we don't know sometimes until it's too late. So, uh, consumer protection's there. Uh, and the last one is, well, one of the last ones, I guess, is energy deregulation. We strongly oppose that. That always goes badly. It goes bad in Texas, any deregulated market. We don't want it in Kansas, uh, lower, you get lower quality of service, lower reliability, and people get higher prices at the end of the day. So we don't want that. Public competition, this one comes up. We talked, I think we talked about this, we talked about bowling alley. The way the legislation was written previously was that uh it was, was basically pretty wide open that anybody who felt like that uh the city was competing with them could apply for a tax exemption because it's not fair that we should compete with them. Uh, the way it was written at one point was that, you know, even people whose, uh, the concession stands out at the sports complex technically would be in competition with the restaurant. Uh, we don't want that. Obviously, they don't deserve a tax break because, you know, we sell popcorn out at the, the sports complex. Now, we're also a little bit further invested in this now because we have a bowling alley, which is a little bit weird. Um, not that anyone's going to open a bowling alley probably, um, but, you know, they could make some sort of, you know, push to, to get a taxes, tax thing because we're competing with them. So, uh, we don't want that. More exemptions degrades the tax base and passes the cost on people who are, who are actually being, uh, you know, other, being good payers and good stewards. Uh, one that's always on here, mental health investment. Uh, we have a lot of calls here that are complicated by mental health issues for the police department. Uh, police officers are not mental health workers. Um, we need as many as possible and they've done, they have made some progress on this area. There are things that Prairie View, I know, is doing some things now. Uh, they're able to accept some of our people. Uh, they're building a mental health hospital in, in Wichita. Uh, we just want to keep pushing for more and more funding on that because it does complicate a lot of our calls that we just, we're not equipped to deal with. Um, and so those are things we need to think about too. That's a lot to throw at you. Sorry about that. That's my legislative update for the year. Um, you know, a lot of these things may impact us in different ways. Um, this is by no means a full and complete list. If there are things you don't think are important on there, we can take them off. You think we need to add stuff, we can do that too. Um, it's just, I, I think we need to kind of settle, and we're actually a little late to the game. We did this a little earlier last year. We got the mic off, we didn't get quite quick enough. But, uh, looking for feedback on that, if there are things in there we need to change, maneuver.
Question?
Yeah.
So I see the two thousand twenty-four statement of municipal policy and there's six things on there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, many more things that you just went through. So are we, are we considering expanding that? Or are we whittling these down to the, you know, the six most important that we want to focus on? Or what, what are we thinking there?
Uh, either way, um, if you feel like some of these, some of these are probably more actionable, specific things. Um, versus some of this other stuff like preservation of home rule, um, property tax reform are a little bit more abstract.
For a while.
If, if you wanted to do.
Yeah.
You wanted to, six is a good number, but if you wanted to have eight, you could do that. If you didn't think we needed that many, we can pull back. Um, I think the important thing is just to keep it concise as you can. Because legislators don't read. They, they get handed more than two pages and I can't read it.
Well, and you only have a certain amount of time with them too.
Mm-hmm.
They're busy, so.
Yeah, when we meet with legislators at, like, Local Government Day, we try to keep it down to like two or three things max. Um, because we got fifteen minutes maybe.
In the hallway.
In the hallway sometimes. That shouldn't be a problem this time. Got a new representative.
He might let us in the office.
Make it in the office this time.
Yeah. No, I like it. I think it's, I think it's good.
Yeah. Anything you want us to cut out of there, chip away at?
Can't think of anything.
I'm going to make them more concise because it's going to be on one page. I mean.
So it's going to look like this page, but with all of these.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try to kind of.
Yeah, I guess, yeah. I'm okay with it.
Have they got any burning issues you want to add?
So you have your direction?
Okay, go for it.
Yeah. I know how those meetings with the legislators go, so.
Yeah.
Okay, next is uh an added item is meeting times, Mr. Styles.
I talked with Lou a little bit about this and he thought we should put it on for his discussion item. Um, so our council meetings, just so you know, are set by ordinance. They're not written on stone tablets, uh, that came down from the mountain. So you can change that if anytime you want to. Um, so we specifically made a change for Dave Lowen when he was coaching basketball. Uh, meeting time for one of the previous twenty years had been at four o'clock. Um, we moved it to six thirty or sometimes at seven, um, just to accommodate his schedule. And so that, you know, that ended up, we, we ended up making that a permanent change in twenty-two. Um, thought was that that time we'd encourage more public participation and avoid constantly moving the meeting. I think that was probably the bigger issue is we were constantly having to kind of adjust it. So, um, later meeting times, it's, it's fine. Obviously, we're here, we're here to do the job and we're, we're here to serve you and that's, that's our job. Um, sometimes it creates some issues for us though. Um, it, you know, sometimes when we have to bring in uh people, you know, we're either bringing them in on comp time or, or overtime uh to make presentations, which, you know, they're happy to do it. But we also miss out on some of the things like family programs or sporting events. Um, I know, I know Lou misses out on some too, quite a few. And so it, it's an issue and it, honestly, it's a little bit of a drag on the staff. Um, and so wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Um, like, i- would, if it's possible, I don't even know that it is because obviously we've got new council people, you guys work. Um, and there's, you know, schedules there and employers are not always as accommodating as they could be or, or need to be uh for that. And from public engagement perspective, you know, I don't, I don't know that we got people banging down the door a lot of times at either time. Um, I don't know how many budget hearings we've had. We've ne- never had comment.
Never had a comment.
Never had a comment.
Ever.
Years, so. Um, you have the authority as the council to, to ma- move meeting times, frequency, whatever works best for, for you guys by ordinance. Um, as far as when governing bodies meet, there's a wide variety. Uh, it's usually twice a month and I wouldn't recommend dropping it to once. Uh, I would be.
Has to be at least once.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta go at least once. Twice, we're built around a two meeting schedule, so don't go to one unless. That's going to be really tough. Um, but yeah, I'm, we've got, I've, I know, I know some cities that meet early in the morning. I know some of them meet, you know, at later times at night. I've had city council meetings that were start, that started at eight to accommodate people. Um, it's completely up to you. You just gotta, um, you know, I'm going to be here, Daniel's going to be here, we'll be here to serve you, whatever it is. And Kendra will be here, or Andrew, Kendra. Um, we'll be here. Uh, we just wanted to bring that to attention because it is, it is a little bit of a drain and it's, it's challenged from a family perspective and a time perspective. And, um, it's been especially tough this year just because we've had a lot of meetings. It's dark, we're short staffed, so we're a little bit fried on some things. So we're just putting it out there and asking if that's, if, if it's even a possibility. Um, if not, then that's okay too, but we just wanted to have that discussion.
Counsel? I'll need to chat with boss. I think that was partly why we moved it.
Yeah, to accommodate yours.
I wasn't able to meet at four. I know what he'll say. He'll say, yeah, it's fine, but the end of the four o'clock to five thirty for me is bananas.
That's your end, yeah.
Yeah.
Your turn.
Um.
I get that.
I'll, I'll, I'll visit with him, see what he thinks.
Well, I know at least sometimes for me, I mean, there are some instances where at work I have to stand till five thirty. And so, and at that point, I would be the only one in the lab to do things. So I probably wouldn't want to move it around that time. I mean, move it up past five thirty. Um, and then having it at, you know, six thirty gives the time, but I am staying till five thirty to get home, eat dinner and whatnot. So, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with um the current meeting time.
Uh, after reading this, I did, I reached out and so I'd probably have some flexibility there if we, if we made a change. Um, probably still works better for me to be on the same schedule, but I can, I can be flexible as well to go to four o'clock. Sounds like maybe I'd be a little more flexible than the other uh councilmen. Um, so, you know, I can, I can defer to what works with their schedules.
You know, go ahead.
Well, I would say my schedule's pretty busy. I think I could work it out, get in it. I could see where it'd be handy for the city boys.
Sure, yeah, I totally get it.
Yeah, I'd like.
So, you know, whenever you want to meet, whatever it works out, it's fine by me.
Do, um, do you feel like we need to get some, see if, see if anybody in the public has a, has a preference as well? Is that?
Yeah.
Should that be part of our, uh, part of our deliberation?
Yeah, that should be.
So I guess I would give some instruction to the council to uh see if you can get some feedback from uh, from your constituencies. And see if any. We won't table it. We'll, we'll continue it at our next meeting and uh see, see where we're at. Okay.
Appreciate it.
Now, we've got a land bank meeting we need to, we need to have and there's some additions there that uh we're, we're uh kind of at the end of things. So I'm going to call the, a meeting of the land bank, the city of Hillsborough to order. And the first item up under our land bank meeting is our minutes from our November nineteen, twenty twenty-four meeting. Did everyone receive a copy of the minutes? Were there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the minutes as submitted. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Byes seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now we have a couple items here to address. I think we've got uh two thousand dollars for ransom financial and then uh thirty-four thousand four hundred and eighty.
Uh, those, those are CDBD.
Sorry, pardon me.
Yeah.
Wow, getting crazy. All right, go ahead. I'm going to scroll.
Yeah, no, we have a land bank uh vouchers for twelve thousand five hundred and eleven seventy-four. Uh, those are all property taxes for property within the land bank. Um, biggest chunk of that's AMPI. Still kind of have a running gun battle with the county on that. Um, we are trying to split that property up uh by replating it and that will make this a lot simpler. Uh, because then we can exempt out a lot of pieces that don't need to be qualified in there. Uh, I also have a conversation, I'm having a conversation with the county councillor about that too. So, um, we'll see what happens. we'll see what happens, but I would suggest or recommend paying them, uh, and then we can fight with them later.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the twelve thousand five hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-four cents in property tax. Councilman McCarty is in a motion making mood. And we have a second by Councilman Jorgensen. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We will now close our land bank meeting and move back into our city council meeting. Uh, for those that may not be aware, the land bank is made up of the city councils, so same group of people, just different title. Okay, we have, uh, next up is the city administrator's report, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So, uh, strategic planning, I haven't forgotten about the notes. I really haven't. Um, we actually had a city, city employees meeting yesterday and so I want to incorporate some of that feedback in there too. Interesting meeting. I think they have some pretty strong opinions about code enforcement and, um, looking at, uh, entertainment kind of things and more options for people with kind of doing a better, kind of the same story as far as doing a better job of telling people what we have and kind of doing that and being better about that. So I'm hoping to get that and then I'm, I'm gonna meet with Colin, uh, Hanson here. Hopefully before the end of the year to get a date, some dates kind of set out for January and then we'll get some feedback on when you guys can make things. Uh, grant updates, we haven't heard back on the seed grant for Rebar Market yet. We're still waiting. I'm not optimistic. We'll hear before the end of the year, but we'll see. Prepping a trail, trail grant, uh, for benches out on the hospital trail. Uh, actually the the board for the Kiwanis Club approved making a five hundred dollar donation for, to assist with those benches. So they're gonna buy a bench too. Yeah, it's gonna be cool. Uh, so we got a, we got a grant for that and then we're also working for, uh, an E P A grant. Um, that's for resilient communities. They got a webinar for that tomorrow, um, dressing. It's, it's for cleanup and it's for a lot of different things, but one of them potentially is cleanup for the A M P I building, which would be awesome. Uh, Kelly and I were talking about that today, um, or maybe even the old hospital if there's something that needs to happen there. Uh, and then K P P's work, looking at a, um, a battery project to go along with the Pace solar project. So what that would be, we don't currently have any kind of generation capacity, but this would put a battery, um, system potentially with that solar system so that you could, um, if you were out of power from ever G, you could turn on the battery system and, and put it into, put it into the grid. And so you could basically use that as backup generation. So you're capturing some of that solar, turning it into battery. And I, I would assume that they would probably use it for, for peak management too. I'm not exactly sure. Mike and I really haven't gotten into it.
They have, uh, you may, there was a lot of things discussed at the K P P annual meeting, but one of them was that the, um, the, uh, pace solar project is actually going to be used for peak shaving purposes to help lower our, lower the communities that are involved in the project. Lower our peak energy requirements, so that will help reduce our energy costs. So that's, uh, that's exciting. It's not gonna be, um, uh, a network resource as much as it's gonna be used to shave that, uh, that peak load.
That actually ends up being a better investment than.
We get a better return.
Better return.
Both, both as a city of Hillsborough and also as, uh, as a K P P, as, as an agency.
Yeah, so it works out really good. Um, so Mike and I are gonna meet actually next week to talk a little bit more about that. I've got some real specific questions, uh, that I have to answer and we're gonna talk through those. Um, K P P annual meeting, so we had, uh, Mayor Lou was there, of course, he's on the board, uh, but Ronald and, and, uh, Barney went with, uh, me as well. I think it was a pretty good meeting. I don't know how y'all felt, but, but. Um, Lou got elected to serve another term on the board, so that's great.
FYI, I was also, uh, appointed yesterday to the policymakers council of A P P A. So that will require me to, uh, I'll be going to the legislative rally at the end of February as I did last year. And then there's be one other meeting that will take place in July. So I'll be going to that and that's something that K P P covers the cost of, uh, of attending those meetings, so. The legislative rally is in D C, but the, uh, the other meeting is, is. To be determined at this point. So I have a call with, uh, the legislative liaison for A P P A tomorrow and, uh, we'll get some more information. But that's a three-year, three-year appointment.
Uh, we had the rate, um, we set the rate too for twenty-five at the K P P annual meeting and, uh, for, for better or worse, it was bought down by some budgeting maneuver, well, maneuvering, I don't know if that's the right word, but. Um, so it's actually five percent lower than what they told us at the rate forum, uh, cause they rearranged some things in the budget. Um, and that is what it is. Um, and then we heard about the pace solid projects mentioned in that. So ours, I think is gonna be sometime, they're gonna start construction in twenty-five, kind of early late summer or, or late spring, early summer, it sounded like. Uh, they're gonna do some of the bigger ones first, so I would anticipate ours to maybe start construction in twenty-five, but not be operational till twenty-six. Um, so that'll be, that'll be a good piece of that. And I mentioned the battery thing, so that might be something that gets, uh, amended and added on there too, so. Uh, we taped a new episode of Coffee with the Mayor. I thought it went really well.
Yeah.
That went really well. I was surprised by some of the things that came out. Uh, Byron Adrian, he's president and CEO of Menonite Housing for at least another couple of days. Um, he came in and we talked about the Menonite Housing project and, uh, kind of how that works. I mean, he's, he's retiring from his position, but he's still gonna be working on Menonite Housing, so he's still gonna be our, our guy on this project, so we're excited about that.
Uh, just a little teaser for those of you that, uh, are looking forward to it, you will learn Byron Adrian's favorite musical artist, uh, most impactful in his life. He just share that in this episode, so, you know, that'll hopefully encourage you to tune in and, and learn what, uh, who that is.
It was interesting. I was, I was surprised by it. He's, uh, yeah, no, he's, he, I mean, I think he's a, fair to say he's a pretty reserved kind of guy. Uh, when we got into the conversation, they kind of opened up and that was, that was the most surprising thing I learned. That was good, that's good. Uh, yeah, so that, that'll actually hit, uh, our YouTube channel on the twenty-seventh.
Final Friday.
Final Friday. Uh, and we're also, we're also talking about our next six months of booking, so, um, we're, we're getting to that too. Uh, health insurance savings report, so just gave you information on that. Um, we got our year, our savings up on that. Uh, sixty-four thousand for the year. Transitions worked out really well, okay, um, to the K M A health plan. Uh, and then another thing I follow up with, yeah, and we talked about it a little bit at the, when we're talking about benefits, yeah, the last meeting about the insurance waiting period and we went back through and I looked at all the policies and stuff and we don't have a policy technically on this. There's no, it's not written anywhere. Um, and so our, our deal with that is we had a waiting period of an extra month, basically, uh, from when someone starts. So we just changed that. Um, I'm, I'm asking for forgiveness, I guess, instead of permission on this one. Just changed it because what we're gonna end up doing is catching the, uh, we're gonna catch the premium on the backside instead of having to pay it upfront, so. Um, you're not losing anything, we're just shortening that time. And so I was like, well, let's, let's just make that change and see how it goes, but. Um, I think it'll be okay. Like I say, we're not losing anything and it's not actually a formal policy that we have anywhere, so, uh, we just made that change. Again, if you don't like that and you want me to change it back, we can sure do that. And then a holiday brunch invite, so we're gonna be closed on twenty-fourth at noon and, uh, we're gonna have brunch here. Um, typically, what happens is the office people make the brunch, but we decided we're tired of doing that, so. Uh, we shipped it off, we're gonna ship it off to different departments and we're gonna make them do it. Uh, or no, they get to do it.
It's an opportunity.
So we're like, hey, who's the newest people? Parks and Rec guys, they're all new. Uh, and they are super excited about doing it and they have a Blackstone Grill, so hopefully we'll get some pancakes or something like that. So if you want to come in at ten, you're more than welcome to join us. It'll be fun. We always have a kind of a, a fun time with that. That'll be good. And then we'll be closed for Christmas Day and then New Year's Day. Uh, I'm gonna be gone for a few days around here too and Danielle's gonna be gone for a few days, so. We're, we're kind of celebrating the season at that time, so a couple extra things, um. Uh, one extra thing, I guess. So Flin Hills Regional Council, uh, we haven't really had a whole update with them. They have got a new director or a temporary director.
Interim director is Kent Glasscock. Some of you may know who Kent is. He was the Speaker of the House Representatives here for the state of Kansas. So he served, uh, as a legislator for, for quite a while. He's also involved with the, uh, the Kansas State University and.
He's a instructor there, isn't he?
Yeah, different things, so he's gonna step in and the goal is to help the organization increase their funding levels through membership and, and other, other means so that we can get a reasonable wage that will attract the right kind of person to be the director. And so he's wanting to help build this up until we can get to that point. Cause we've had trouble holding on to a director in the past just due to, uh, the, uh, ability to be financially competitive in the market.
Yeah, so that, that's, that's one of the big things coming out of there. Uh, also their E P A planning grant that we are written into starts, uh, they actually started yesterday in Harrington. Um, and so we're on the list to do, uh, corridor planning starting in June or July. Um, and so I think that actually works really well with our schedule with what we're talking about. Strategic plan, I'm hoping to have that done by March. Uh, I know one of the things that's gonna come out of there, because we've talked about it a lot, is downtown development. So, uh, this corridor grant would help us do, they'd actually bring in outside planners to help us evaluate some options for that, uh, do some testing if there needs to be. Um, there's some funding as, as part of our, our, our membership there and that grant to, to help, help design that and do that. So, uh, downtown plan, it can include A M P I and it can include the old hospital too, so those are. I'm making a real broad what a corridor is. I mean, it's a big, say it's big. Um, so they're gonna start in June or July and so that's, that's kicking off. I know we had kind of talked about that and we're wondering. Uh, they're also helping us put together this grant for the E P A thriving communities. Um, it's had a great call with Janet today and she's their, uh, lead planner. Um, and so they've got a lot of resources to help with that and it's a sub-grant thing. And so that's a heck of a lot less intimidating than trying to work directly with the E P A, so. Real excited about that. I think we may be able to find some money to help with A M P I. Uh, that's the one I'm focusing on because that's the biggest one we have, I think. Um, and then I wouldn't say that I, I showed the old hospital to somebody today, um, who's interested and maybe i- it's tied to the veterans thing where they may potentially could turn it into some veteran housing. Um, and there's also some ideas as far as like converting portions of it to business type thing to help support that. They were, it was really, they were really excited. The person was really excited. This person is always really excited, but very excited about this potential opportunity. And I said, you know what, man, if you can figure out something to do with this hospital, great. Cause it's just sitting here and needs to be something, so. Uh, we're gonna continue working with that and following that down the trail and see what happens. Uh, there may be some grants from the V A or, um, that Department of Veterans Affairs or, uh, is the V A, um, some other places that may be able to help with that too, so. Uh, you may have something coming forward with that and hopefully maybe in the future, we'll see. That's everything I have, sir. I'm done talking.
Any questions? Okay, now is the opportunity for final, uh, public comment opportunity. Is there anybody from the public that would care to make a comment? Let's keep it brief, sir.
On comments on your fire station, one of the main prominent long-time businesses in Hillsborough was maybe not so much the building, but the extravagance of it was, I'm not sure what your total layout is. So it was kind of negative on, I think, sleeping rooms or something to that extent. And my comment is why are you using USDA money to fund the city project? Is a negative for just me personally being. And it's, I've seen it other places where USDA has built a lot of funding for rural communities benefit. I think it's how it's set up to be if I understand the program correctly. So I think we're entitled to use that. But in the same token, there's more agriculture related sometimes that don't get funded. It's just a burn or s- saddle once in a while. Yes, the last thing on the bowling alley, you said something about opening the alley. I'd say it'd be better if we're preserving the alley as moving forward is a way to look at that and make it more positive than we're opening the bowling alley was preserved for the benefit. And on your little deal, does it go outside the city limits?
It wouldn't, I don't think we were intending it to.
I mean, there'd be from Gosse to Lee High. I mean, Marion's probably not going, got their own, so. And there's nothing on the north end of the county.
This is really for people, you know, not for patriot, not for patrons of the bowling alley, but for people that since it's a city-owned property, it's the city, citizens and taxpayers of the city of Hillsborough.
That would still use it that isn't a city resident.
But.
And it's just, again, we can, ten, ten ways from Sunday.
I hadn't really thought about eligibility, it was sort of like.
The next thing, the next thing you know, it, we wouldn't have to, we could use some of the letters. It could go from, uh, from Blue Jay to Blue, Blue Bird.
There you go. Got some bluebird lanes.
And the last, last is happy holidays, everybody.
Yeah, Merry Christmas. All right, is there anyone else that would care to address the council? Yes, ma'am.
Just a vote of confidence for the fire department and emergency services. I hear what you're saying, but it is really essential for the vitality of the small community to have those kinds of services and to, to read the reports that come out and and I think the Marion County Record has done a really nice job, even though sometimes the articles seem laborious on. And then they went there and then they went there and then they went there. On the other hand, it's saying a lot about the stress that's being put on our EMS people. And I think we have to respect that and that it's really something we need to attend to to have a good, robust, small community. Thank you for all the work that's gone into that.
And there's a lack of staffing in the people in the area. Well, it's pretty substantial at this point, but you guys will respond to at least half of them.
Well, we certainly responded to the recent fire at the Coenburg Inn, you know, along with the city of Marion. So I think they both showed up pretty, pretty close to the same time, so that was good. Um, but you know, and the one, one last comment regarding the, uh, fire station. The, the, uh, service area is not just the city limits of Hillsborough. And so we are defending a lot of ag property, so I guess I would not, uh, be too concerned about utilizing the Department of Agriculture to, uh, defend.
Communities is, I think they're intenting on using these USDA funds to fund a lot of these projects. And this wouldn't be the only one within the county.
Well, this one definitely is, is, goes beyond the city limits of Hillsborough, so significantly. I can't remember, is it a hundred and some square miles?
About a hundred square mile, yeah.
So, anyway, is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing.
Council comments?
Oh, pardon me, thank you. I am, Councilman Jorgensen.
Uh, yeah, just a, a quick comment. We were talking about our, our, uh, fire department and, and those great, uh, folks that work for that and their response, uh, from this last weekend, um, of K fifteen and, uh, that situation, so. Um, and then also our response from the city to, um, take care of them and our fire department and their needs for whatever counseling and things like that that are appropriate.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's important and, you know, I've, I've had some conversations with, uh, people that have been in, uh, in, in emergency services, law enforcement for a long time. And it's not just one incident, it's, it's, it's cumulative over a career, you know, and and Matt talked about, we've had several firefighters that have over twenty years of service. I mean, you know, they have seen and had to deal with a lot in that twenty years and it's never just any particular, one particular thing generally, it can, it can just accumulate. And so dealing with it immediately, which is what those debriefs and, and, and mental health debriefs that we do. That's, that's so that we don't, we can hopefully shut down some of the long-term benefits and the I know Councilman McCarty, former chief of police, you know, probably knows what I'm talking about. Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's, uh, affirmed my comments and that's all I had.
Councilman Wilkins.
Just affirming the same thing and just glad that we could help out, um.
our fire department and just respect everything that they do. That is it, sir.
Okay, Councilman McCarty.
I'm just glad we're finally doing something, that's what I'd like to say.
Well, I know it's been a goal of yours, uh, since you've been on the council and, uh, you know, to your credit, you haven't given up on it and, uh, you've stuck with it and you've been instrumental in, in helping us do this final push, so I appreciate all your efforts.
Costs so much, but that's, we would've done it years ago, would've had it, it's wrong with the cost, you know.
Councilman Bye?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Okay, now, is there any other business? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for your participation, thanks for coming.
Yes.
We always appreciate seeing people from the community, so. Maybe we always, mostly we appreciate.
Yeah.
Nightmares back.
I tell you what, you're gonna, you're, what are you trying to do?
We're gonna have everyone sign that amendment.
To use a punchline from a joke that I won't tell, I wouldn't have told that.